Yeah, we have no volume here.
I believe the line is, is this thing on?
It, there we go.
Oh.
Hey, check. Um, all right. Joshua Jackson, would you mind doing the pledge for us?
Please stand in face of flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is it Pastor Mike Wadka here? All right, we'll have.
Is he here, Mike?
We'll have Pastor Keith Capizzi, Club Zion, do the invocation.
I'm the fill-in. Father, I thank you and bless you that we can come together and seek your will, your purpose, your wisdom, and your guidance, Lord, for the city. We pray for protection and guidance, Lord, through this hurricane season that you would keep them storms away, Lord, but not that we're asking that it goes to others, Lord, but spare us, please, Lord, and give this council extreme wisdom as they make decisions for the city. I pray for each of them, Lord, that they conduct themselves in a manner worthy of their calling. Thank you for our city attorney, our manager, and our clerk, Father. Let all things be done to your glory and honor. We ask this in Jesus's name, amen.
City clerk, roll.
Commissioner Jackson.
Here.
Commissioner Hutcheson.
Here.
Commissioner Tumulty.
Here.
Vice Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Capizzi.
Here. City Attorney.
Okay, this is the budget hearing. Item one, approve the tentative millage rate of 6.0000 mills for fiscal year 2026. The proposed millage rate of 6.0000 mills is 0.65% higher than the rollback rate of 5.9610 mills. Adoption of the millage rate by resolution number 2025-17 is scheduled for September 18th, 2025. Staff representative Hannah Jewman, finance director A.J. Hudson, city manager, recommendation approved.
Move to approve, as read.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes file. Number two. Oh, sorry.
There was a roll call.
Roll call, sorry.
A roll call.
They want roll call. All right, and also have, did you ask for comments?
Comment.
Oh, sorry about that. Just so, so used to consent agenda. Yeah, any, any public comment on, on our tentative millage rate? All right, roll call.
Commissioner Jackson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hutcheson.
Nay.
Commissioner Tumulty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Mayor Capizzi.
Aye. Motion passes for one. Number two.
Okay, approve the tentative budget making appropriations for fiscal year 2026. Adoption of the budget by resolution number 2025-17 is scheduled for September 18th, 2025. Staff representative Hannah Jewman, finance director A.J. Hudson, city manager, recommendation approved.
Move to approve tentative budget, as read.
Motion in a second. Any public comment? Fink.
K.P. Fink, 1907, Monroe Lane. Just two remarks that I saw in the budget. There is a million plus in there for the bicentennial park. I thought that was kind of fully funded and then, or by, by a grant. And then there is a million plus in there for vegetation island in the golf course. I really wonder if we need that, thank you.
Okay. I suppose we're going to be going over this, Hannah, in the presentation, right? Oh, there's, okay, all right.
That's fully funded, though.
So, yeah, I just wanted to.
Islands on the golf course are.
As far as I understand, grant funded, we're fully funded already, so. Any other public comment? All right, roll call.
Commissioner Jackson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hutcheson.
Nay.
Commissioner Tumulty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Mayor Capizzi.
Aye. Motion passes for one. All right.
This is the approval of the agenda.
Anybody want to, motion?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. All right, we have a special presentation. This is for, uh, the proclamation for National Suicide Prevention Month. And we have Representative Wayne Price is here, and I'll read it. Whereas September is designated as National Suicide Prevention Month as recognized by the National Association of Mental Illness, and whilst many health officials and community leaders locally, state, and nationally understand that mental illness is a significant issue of concern, particularly among our youth, and whereas we realize that to address mental health issues requires more open and honest discussions about mental health, and whereas one major hurdle in moving the stigma attached to mental health treatment and discussion, and whereas individuals, businesses, organizations, public officials, and many others recognize the importance of emotional health, and therefore be resolved that the city of Cocoa Beach supports efforts on the Space Coast to provide education and resources for national help, for mental health problems, and be it further resolved that the city of Cocoa Beach will encourage a positive effort to encourage those with mental health issues to seek the help of a family member, friend, colleague, and/or licensed mental health professional to assist them in times of need, adopted by members of the Cocoa Beach, by the, by members of the city of Cocoa Beach on September 4th, 2025. If you'd like to, you can. Sure, yes. Come up and say something, and then you come and grab your proclamations from me.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, thank you for having me. I'm Johnette Ginling, I'm the president and CEO of Space Coast Health Foundation, and I'm also here with Do It For Hunter, and he's with you. I want to thank you for passing this resolution and the ongoing interest that you have in promoting suicide awareness and prevention and mental health in Brevard County. We started this initiative four years ago, and Cocoa Beach was an earlier supporter. We thank you for that. We wish there were any answers to this, and we wish we could end this tragedy, but unfortunately, we know there aren't quick fixes. The latest stats from the Florida Department of Health, 2023, tell us that Brevard saw nearly 150 people take their own lives. That's a rate of 21 per 100,000 people. The rate of Florida was just over 14 per 100,000 people. The Space Coast Health Foundation and other in Brevard's mental health community are determined to do something about this. Your support means a lot towards us getting to solutions and finding better alternatives for the people when they need us most. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. My name is Ginny Gleason, and I represent Do It For Hunter. On behalf of Do It For Hunter, I want to sincerely thank the city of Cocoa Beach for recognizing Suicide Awareness Month. Support means more than the words express. It's a powerful step toward breaking the silence and saving lives. Sadly, the need for awareness is more urgent than ever. According to the CDC again statistics from 2023, over 50,000 people in the U.S. died by suicide, the highest number ever recorded. Even more alarming, suicide rates among youth and young adults increased by near 40% the last two days. These are just nerves. These are our sons, our daughters, our friends, our neighbors, people like Hunter. Our nonprofit, Do It For Hunter, was created to honor life and fight us who are struggling. We share mental health resources. We work with schools to provide 988 Suicide Lifeline stickers on all student laptops. We have purchased and placed 10 suicide awareness benches at local schools and parks. And each September since we lost Hunter, we have hosted a free community event called You Matter Day. And it will be this year on Saturday, September 27th, at Brevard Island High School, and we invite you all to attend. It's a day dedicated to connection, hope, and healing. There will be speakers, music, local organizations, and resources for anyone who needs support, wants to support us. For more information, visit doitforhunter.org. Our mission is simple, vital, to remind people they are not alone and that their lives matter. Let's continue this conversation. Let's make health a priority, not just this month, but every day. Together, we can save lives. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So you said 50,000 nationwide suicides? So because of all the overdose deaths, and a lot of those are unintentional, then there are some that are actually committing suicide by overdose deaths. How do you delineate between those two, or who delineates between those two as to which ones were suicides and which ones were just negligent overdoses?
Well, I think that's a really good question. Oftentimes, we do know when a person dies from suicide in the way that they died or the way that they left a note. As far as the fentanyl accidental overdoses, I think that's another, whole nother conversation, but my understanding is that these statistics are more from verified deaths by suicide.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, good question. Thank you again.
And I have your proclamations if you want to come grab them.
We'd love, I'd love to get a pic with you.
All right, do we have any public comments about items that are not on the agenda?
Retain, and that's retained.
Staff reports.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. First, we received a call from FDOT a couple weeks ago about a Viking, a Viking safety symbol that was in the sidewalk on Rose, in front of Roseville School. And FDOT told us that it had to be removed. We did a little bit of research and found out that actually the symbol, the artwork of the Viking symbol was the result of an FDOT contest, art contest. And they said, well, it's got to be removed anyway, and so rather than us remove it, I had them remove it. They reached out to Roosevelt School and offered, in lieu of the, the symbol in the sidewalk, they offered a poster or a sign to the school to recognize the students, so. And apparently, it's part of a larger effort regarding street markings, and I think Roosevelt School and Cocoa Beach got caught in, in, in the net, so. Any questions on that?
Yeah, did, did somebody get fired, or, I mean, did some, some marking genius that had this idea that didn't go through the proper channels?
You know, my, my guess is the FDOT did, did the contest in the spring in good faith, not knowing that at the federal level, there was some concern about markings on the street and sidewalks. And FDOT, FDOT controls the markings on both the streets and the sidewalks, so.
On, on their street sidewalks, not ours?
On all. They control the markings.
Oh, the mark, oh, okay. Not the signage, though.
Right, right, so, so that was.
I believe the, I think the new laws or whatever came into effect was maybe July 1st or something like that. There was, a lot of times when they have the new laws roll out, they, they, they come in in July. They, if they did it just before, I'm not sure if that's their reason, but.
I, you know, I don't know when it came into effect. All I know is I received a, an urgent phone call from the secretary of FDOT's District 7 about the need to remove the Viking artwork, so.
So FDOT spends about as much in demolishing and removing the stuff that they build, right? Spend about as much on that as it cost them to build those things and put them down, okay? Just interesting.
Second version of the speed bumps.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, how much have they wasted on Cocoa Beach?
Let it die.
Let it die, because it's ridiculous. I mean, it's going to, it's going to, social media will take it.
Still need to have a good partnership with FDOT.
Social media did take it, and the two winning students got a lot, a lot more publicity.
Good.
So we made sure of that.
Okay.
Secondly, working with Main Street on renewal of their annual agreement, that probably will be brought forth at the 918 commission meeting. I would also like to recognize Pete Malzone, an employee of, of Cocoa Beach since 1972, who just retired on August 29th, 2025, 53 years with the city.
Wow.
First as a firefighter, then he worked in an administrative capacity in the police department. So Pete, I hope you enjoy your retirement, you earned it. And, and finally, I regret that I have to pass along sad news of the passing of Darby Blanchard. Darby also started with the city in 1972. He retired in 2015. He, along with Chuck Billius, were instrumental in building the water reclamation plant, the wastewater treatment plant, and the irrigation system in the city. He, he, he did a lot over the years and brought the system up to what it is today. So rest in peace, Darby, and that's all I have.
Thank you, thank you.
City Attorney.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
City Commission?
Got a couple items. One, welcome, city manager. I know you've been in the interim role, but, but thank you for taking on the official role. We're so delighted to have you.
Thank you for having me.
Couple announcements. One, really great news, and hopefully I'm not stepping on, on Tim's announcements, but our Brevard County Schools are excelling. We have five Brevard County Schools ranked among the top in Florida. So number four in the district, 85, 85th in the state for Cocoa Beach. So we are doing really, really well. Schools are awesome. And just a warning for all of us with young drivers. Brevard is starting the bus patrol, and it's launching now. It's already launched technically. I'll read it, and then I'll just kind of give you the, the quick so what. Brevard Public Schools and Brevard County Sheriff's Office have launched the school bus safety program to protect students on their way to and from schools. The stop-arm cameras on the buses will automatically catch drivers who illegally pass stop school buses. So if the stop sign is out, stop, even if you're going the other way, even if you're in multiple lanes. Drivers who illegally pass stop school buses have already started giving warnings on August 11th and beginning September 17th. Violators will be receiving a $250 citation automatically. The camera will catch you, so you'll get the citation automatically. So for our young drivers who are not aware of the rules with school buses, let's remind our kids, stop for the school buses. So anyway, thank you, just wanted to get that out there.
Anyone else?
Uh, yeah, to, you know, add on to the schools, you know, my, my weekly or bi-weekly report on phones is, is that instead of being an interim situation where there were no referrals for kids having phones, as of Monday, they started giving referrals. First one is, hey, they just take the phone away. First one is, hey, they just take the phone away for the day, then give it back. Second time, take the phone away, the parents got to come pick it up. Third time is actually a suspension. So it's pretty, they're very serious about it, and fortunately, the kids are all taking it, are taking it serious. So, you know, it's good stuff. You know, I know both of the gentlemen that A.J. spoke about, Pete, his last job is cutting grass on the golf course, and I'd see him on a regular basis. He truly loved Cocoa Beach, and he's, you know, he's going to miss it out there, but he's got some grandkids now that he wants to take care of, and that's why he's retiring, even after 50 years. And Darby was amazing, had a lot of, you know, in-house information, obviously building the water treatment facility and the wastewater system through the city. Actually, gave me his phone number, said after he retired, hey, if you need anything in evil about, anything going on with water treatment facility, like as a liaison, he'd come in and answer questions. I mean, just, you know, just a super, two super nice guys. And that's basically what you see really in Cocoa Beach. A lot, you know, all the ways here are pretty, pretty sharp and care about the city. So thank you all so much.
Anyone else?
Yeah, as far as Darby goes, you know, I've worked with him a lot of years, you know, interfaced with him, and he was very straightforward, easy to get along with, good with residents. And I'm really kind of jealous, because he had a full head of hair.
Because he wasn't a culture.
He had a lot of hair.
I thought you just shaved it like that.
No, no, this is not, this is not the way I trim my hair. Anyway, yeah, God rest his soul. The other thing is, City Manager, some of the questions that came up during the City Manager Candidate interviews was, where are we with our emergency management? Not only the plan, which I'm sure we have leftover from Ducky, but does it need tuned up? And who's going to be the homework person that's going to be the head of emergency management? And I see Justin coming up, he's like, oh, boy, that's my job. But I'm just saying, you know, it's a very serious role. It requires basically 24/7 support during and after a storm or any other emergency. And, you know, I know you're, you've seen Ducky's plan, you know?
Yes, thank you, Skip. We completely updated the plan this last year. It's pretty much the same, but as technologies change, departments have changed, things like that in the last year, we've just kind of updated it. We've updated our EOC and DOC locations, organization charts, things like that. And the directors, never want to know, I send out never-ending weather updates, so we're always on top of it. Right now, 70% chance of a storm forming. It would be named Gabrielle, and it looks to make the curve. That's the way it's looking right now. So more swell and no hurricane. It could also go down to the south and hit the Caribbean, but high-pressure system pushing down, high-pressure system.
We're not asking you to be a weatherman.
I know, I understand, but just so you know, is that we are constantly monitoring the weather, and we have updated the plan. We've sat down with all of the directors and Karen, and we went and sat down with each individual one, and we updated every single portion of the plan that needed to be updated. So.
And you got all your call lists updated with everybody's current cell phone numbers, including ours?
Yeah, yeah, yours are on there, too. Get with Karen.
So the only other thing, and thank you, I guess he's saying he stepped up to the role, right?
Yeah, he, Justin organized and conducted a, what was it, two and a half hour walk-through in June.
We did a mock hurricane.
Okay, good.
So we attend the regular EOC meetings in Rockledge. That's going to be for all the municipalities, including the county, DOT, everyone that's involved. And then we take some of what's that is there, and we bring it here, and we do our own city version of a mock hurricane drill.
Okay.
Not to mention, last hurricane season, you took over, I mean, you were in charge when we had the tornado and all that, so.
Yep, correct.
So my only suggestion is, if you haven't done it already, is there's some extraneous partners, you know, the Small Business Association, the Coast Guard gets involved, there's so many different entities that get involved if you end up having a disaster response center.
Yeah, so I feel like the best way to answer your question is, when we do the mock hur, have you seen the new EOC that's located in Rockledge that's been built? So in that, that control room, if you want to call it, we have representatives from every jurisdiction, not just cities, but like I said, Fish and Wildlife, Sheriff's Department, everything. And then John Scott is the emergency manager. This year, our plan is to send a representative from the city, and what they'll do is they'll be at the control center at the county, and that they'll also be our representative. Now, we do municipal calls, search and rescue calls, EOC updates, all those types of things throughout the storm, but we'll also have a representative there. And when we did the mock hurricane drill, it was really cool to see how if you need something, like for instance, we had a storm that blew sand all the way across A-18 from Pioneeta to Minuteman, and we had no way of getting back and forth. So we were able to get our Public Works Department, along with Satellite Beach's Public Works Department, and then get other resources from Brevard County. And as well as we were able to use barges to bring across emergency equipment to help do things. So having someone there is having a voice at the control. It's like being on the floor of the stock exchange. You're right there.
Right, but what I'm saying is, if we ever did get hit, and we had to set up a disaster response center, there's going to be a key person that's coordinating FEMA response, Small Business Association response, to give loans out to people so that they can, you know, fix up their properties as quick as possible. The Coast Guard gets involved. I've been at a disaster response center for 32 days after Rita hit the Bolivar Peninsula in Texas, and there's a lot of playing parts there. And my only, only thing I'm asking, or, you know, thinking you probably should do, is find out who those key contacts would be, and just kind of reach out to them ahead of time, put names with faces, and say, hey, you know, if something happens here, are you the right person to contact?
Absolutely. And again, at those meetings when we go, those are all the partners and all the people that are going to be there, including hospitals, everyone is there, and I understand what you're talking about with recovery. So there's obviously the planning and all the preparation, there's the actual event, and there's the recovery side, and we do all portions of that, so all those key players are there, so that we can start working towards a quick recovery. So in fact, this, when we do the mock hurricane drill, the event itself is the shortest part. It's a lot of prep and a whole lot of recovery. So, yeah, I understand what you're saying, and I'll, if I can get with A.J. and give you a report, this time we have one of those drills, and John Scott is the emergency manager, and they have been very, very good. When I came in, the first thing I did was sit down with them, I said I want to know what my expectations are, and they've helped me every little bit along the way. And then going to those meetings, you get to develop really good partnerships.
Yeah, I'm just saying, find out who your POCs are for those external organizations that come in during recovery. Contact them, and if you get, like, nothing, crickets, then maybe they've changed POCs so that you can find out who the new one is, and just keep current on who those POCs are for those external agencies.
Understood, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Justin. Chief?
Quick comment, just to keep the residents tuned in, so we had a pretty full day Thursday, Friday interviewing, and it's all great candidates for City Manager. But I think, interestingly enough, we were kind of dispersed across the commission, so it wasn't a clear, obvious choice. So I thank A.J. for accepting, you know, the extension, if you will, and I did get a common theme from the city folks I talked to, that he's the guy for the fit of the city. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate the commission not agreeing and getting a clear picture. So thanks, A.J.
I thought I talked a lot. Anyways, I want to echo A.J. You know, I also did actually an interview with A.J. I wanted to be fair to everybody, but also, you know, I knew A.J., I talked with him, and during the whole, the first process of this, when we picked everybody, I didn't know him. And I was going off of the recommendations of people that I knew, knew him, that I trusted in. And as I got to know him, really solid guy, really nice. I always do my homework, I usually know the answer before I ask a question. That being said, I talked to most of the staff. It was unanimous, not one bad word to say about him. You're a really solid guy, and we're really happy to have you. And as you may know, I'm on the Transportation Organization Board, and I did bring up the concern that you were talking about of building stuff and then removing it. The main thing is communication, and I expressed it to him, and just said, in the future, we really need to, we really need to lock down communication before we actually build a project. We need to speak with the commissioners and everyone else involved, and make sure we're all on the same page. So they were very responsive to that and acknowledged that they could do better in that aspect, so.
Just to add on to that, before he became the Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization Representative in Cocoa Beach, was there a genesis of speed bumps and, you know, pedestrian crossings?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Skip. I'm sorry.
You were there when the speed bumps became a thing.
Wow, wow, Skip, does that pay that cars? Do they have speedster in the wagon trail?
Okay, I was there when they first started talking about the project to put in the speed bumps and the crosswalks. And originally, you say, we need to talk to them ahead of time. Well, I did. And they were going to put in 16 speed bumps in the city. Cut them down to two. The one just speed bump coming into the residential area from the, from the south to the north.
I'm going to let this keep going.
Which didn't last, and then one over here. And I told them, you know, the Love Boys, oh, they have to be six inches off the ground. I said, I've seen Love Boys that are three inches off the ground. That thing is going to last, it's going to be a problem. Nobody's going to like it. So I pulled the bump to two, and then they got put away. Okay? So sometimes you have to, you know, compromise, knock it down as much as you can, and then let the final product come through at the park, kill the rest of it, and the mayor, of course.
All right.
And then he bought a Ferrari that's got this much ground clearance.
Irrelevant, but well, we will move on.
Very relevant. Coincidence, don't have speed bumps, got a Ferrari?
Where are we at?
I don't know.
So, oh.
You're in.
You know, I like to make it interesting for you guys, and that's why we have Skip up here.
Oh.
No, I was joking. I love Skip. Actually, he's the reason why I'm sitting in this seat right now. He's the one that convinced me to run, so I love you, brother. And we, you know, it's all in good fun. All right, here we go, Consent Agenda.
Okay, this is the consent agenda. Item one, approve the August 6th to August 19th. In August 21st, Commission Meeting Minutes, Staff Representative, City Clerk Department, recommendation approved. Contract extension with Marlowe Landscaping for a period of one year to expire September 1, 2026. Staff Representative Brad Calzo, Public Works and Water Reclamation Director, recommendation approved. Item three, approve a one-year memorandum of understanding, MOU, between the City of Cocoa Beach and the City of Cape Canaveral, to share the cost of the School Resource Officer, SRO, assigned to Cocoa Beach Junior/Senior High School for the 2025-2026 school year. This is a budgeted item. Staff Representative Wes Mullins, Police Chief, recommendation approved.
Just one clarification, I-2 is a budgeted item? Usually, we print that out on the consent agenda so that there's no question about it. If it's not budgeted, it's over 50,000, then we have to bring it as a new item. That's, for the record, that's a budgeted item? The landscaping, one year? No, we're not supposed to discuss this, I just, I just wanted a yes or no answer.
This company is based on task orders, so it is budgeted.
It is budgeted.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Motion?
Move. Approved Consent Agenda, red.
Motion's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, 5-0. Unfinished business.
Okay, item one, adopt ordinance 1700 on second reading, an ordinance of the City of Cocoa Beach, Florida, adding a new section 22-2.5 Regulation of Electric Bicycles and Similar Devices on Specified Rights of Way of Article 1 in general of Chapter 22 Streets and Sidewalks of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cocoa Beach, providing regulations for the use of electric bicycles and similar devices on specified rights of way, and providing for conflicts, codification, severability, and effective date. Staff Representative Wes Mullins, Police Chief, recommendation approved. And I will note that there are two Exhibit As attached on the agenda, and the first one is the one that was approved by you on first reading. The second one was the one that was edited by the chief, and it's my strong recommendation to go with his edited version. I think it was better than my version.
Question on that? That was the one you emailed out, correct?
Yes.
The second version?
Move to approve is red.
Motion a second, any public comments? Did you want to say anything, or, okay?
If you're willing, sit down.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Skip.
So back in the day, before there was bicycles, or skateboards.
Now, right?
Oh, no, actually, do you have a point to make? So as a follow-on, we'll see how this works, okay? But it could be possible, me during special events, that we actually ask people to walk their e-bikes, or their skateboards, or their e-anything, even their bicycles or skateboards, through like the downtown area where we've got people on the sidewalks, mingling in the streets, you know? They want to walk their bike with one foot on the ground, kind of pushing their bike along, that's one thing, but, you know, we do have people that do that, and then it actually happens even when we're not having special events and there's crowds. So I would think that if this doesn't kind of quell the appetite for the e-bike speeds and potential dangers to the public, that maybe we should go as step forward.
Okay, so, evening, thanks for having me up here, and thanks for helping us all get to this point. I've had some conversations with a few of you here, specifically related to locating, okay, this kind of thing, and I just want to discuss, just very, very briefly, and I am winning, thank you, the pros and cons of the location issue, right? I, the, I'm torn, right? As Police Chief, my job is to just act what you guys legislate, and we will do it to the best of our ability, like we always do. I think that running a test run on man causeway is a great idea, until you turn on Cedar, and then you see somebody being an idiot on Cedar, and we can't cite them for it. It just seems like a really tough spot for our cops to be in. Other than that, and I actually want to bring that up, it's what Commissioner Williams brought up, but if we make those changes, Cocoa Beach is a really interesting town, right? And we have a bunch of interesting events, bring in a whole bunch of interesting people, and we have a bunch of different areas that, you know, people come together, Surfing Friends, right, Art Fest, all these things. If we're going to do that, then let's do it, right? If we're going to allow it, then let's allow it. If we're not going to allow it during events, then let's, it's got to be in an order, we can't just ask to do that, right? So however you guys want to do it. So however you guys want to do it, let's do it. And if you want to do it as a trial run, then let's do it as a trial run. But if you want to do it, Minuteman, somebody makes that right on the Cedar or left on the Cedar, they can all of a sudden start breaking the rules. I don't know. That's a question that I have. So I just want to make sure.
We already had this discussion before, and it's not discussed on Cedar. It's the middle of the road.
Yeah, and I'm agreeing, Mayor. I'm just, this is going to come either way.
So there's no need to do right ways on Cedar when the problem is they're doing it in the middle of the road. They're breaking the law already. You already have jurisdiction to cite them for doing wheelie on Cedar next to cars or breaking the speed limit or running a stop sign.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not making a case either way. I'm just saying that I have had conversations with commission, right? Aside from that point of view, I just want it out there that I'm down either way. I just, let's just come up with it.
And I'm just saying, let's go with what we got here, and if we still have problems, we can extend it. And then the other thing would be, and this would be up to city manager and the special events folks, that maybe for special events, we could add some signage, you know, both ends of every sidewalk that says, you know, electric vehicles must be walked.
They had that for the Thunder on Cocoa Beach and Cape Canaveral. They signed it said, no scooters allowed, or walk.
Well, you can't say no scooters or skateboarders allowed. It got to do with your scooter or your skateboard. You get them to walk with it.
I misspoke. Walk your scooters. That's what it said.
Right.
Or walk your tree vehicles, whatever.
So I would like to think maybe we could incorporate added special event permits so that we don't have to make it a blanket law for 24/7 in the City of Cocoa Beach, at least for a.
Okay. I think we all have a consensus on this one right here.
Yeah, we have two things we're talking about. And one is the special events. I mean, I've been involved in these special events for 15 years, and it's a big deal. Especially on Friday Fest, and riding their bikes and, you know, flying through the crowd, skateboarders. I mean, I've seen some major hits, and it'd go the wrong way. Say, oh, Skype hit this hit. Well, no. You know, if we have some sort of, like you said, I really like this. So if we have consensus, we can vote on that. But I want to go back, also back to, in fact, Chief, you said that, hey, it's up to us to make the decision, but we aren't the experts and professionals in this area. You are. And I look at you and all the employees here, give us advice on decisions we make, as well as the residents and all, but that's what I look for. I think just doing a trial run on Minuteman is not the way to go. If we're going to make law and order here on these e-bikes, it's got to be citywide. These kids aren't just going 30 miles an hour down Minuteman. They're going 30-plus miles an hour down Cedar, Bard, all the off-streets. And it's not like it was 20, 30 years ago, Mayor, when we were riding bikes, paddling bikes, and doing wheelies. These kids going 30 miles, iron T, you weren't riding your bike 30 miles an hour doing a wheelie.
No, I agree. So I said, he already has the jurisdiction to do it on.
And whether it's a wheelie or not, they're going 30-plus miles an hour.
They're not doing it on the sidewalk over there. They're doing it on the road.
They're doing it.
He has the law to take care of that.
They're doing it everywhere. And it just should be citywide. That's my opinion on this, and again, that's just from the data animation that I have.
I just want to sort it out as, and then if this doesn't help quell the issue, then we can move forward with more restrictive actions. And as far as consist for special events, we do some restrictions on, you know, where you have to walk bikes, walk skateboards, walk e-bikes, walk any kind of vehicle except for maybe a little rise wheelchair, you know? Can't make them walk that. But if we can get consensus that we would ask the city manager to work with special events and figure out there's way to that.
That'd be for them to have an option.
City attorney?
Okay, this, well, first thing, are y'all voting on the second Exhibit A?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to clarify that. But also, but also, the, it only takes a resolution to add streets or add all streets or add streets during special events. We can come back with resolutions. We don't have to advertise it and spend the money and all that, and it can be done in one reading. So if you want to just let this go this way, adopt the base thing, and then we can tweak it by resolution.
I think, looking at where, how far we've come, and this is a start, right? We're, as a city, we learn, right? And that's a good thing. When we were running this past round for commission, I think this was one of the major things that we were hearing from residents, concerns about safety, right? And I think what we're targeting here is outcomes. It's, want to see our kids safer, we want to see pedestrians safer, we want to see a safer situation. And I think what, Chief, thank you, and AJ, thank you for the work that you guys have done on this. I think this is a step in the right direction. I think what found out is the outcomes, and I agree with Commissioner Tumulty, that we want that safety across, you know, across the city. This is not saying just Minuteman needs to be safe, right? Totally agree. I think this is the step, like, direction. Let's see outcomes. Let's take this step, right? And then, as attorney is advised, let's take what we learn with this and continue to refine it. That's my position.
It's a framework that we might have been, it's a resolution to ban or scale it beyond Minuteman, so I like it.
All right. Any public comment? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
It's roll call. You're a senior, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hutcheson?
Aye.
Commissioner Tumulty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Mayor Capizzi?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, this is item one, approve fiscal year 2026 liquid sodium hyperchloride bulk supply piggyback agreement, utilizing Bay County contract bid number 22-27 for Odyssey Manufacturing Company to supply the wastewater treatment plant at a price of $1.69 per gallon. This is a budgeted operating expense. Staff Representative Brad Calzo, Public Works and Water Reclamation Director.
Move to approve is red.
Second.
Motion is a second. Any public comment about the sodium hydrochloride bulk supply?
It's pretty interesting, Dylan, you got so much.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes 5-0.
Okay, item two, accept the city's selection committee recommendation of award for the bid submitted by American Facility Services, Inc., under bid CB 25-008, to provide janitorial services for City Hall Fire Station 51 and Police Station. Allow staff to enter into a contract with American Facility Services, Inc. This is a budgeted operating expense for fiscal year 26. If a contract cannot be negotiated with American Facility Services, Inc., allow staff to enter into contract with the second and/or third ranked company. Staff Representative Brad Calzo, Water Reclamation and Public Works Director, recommendation approved.
Approve is red.
Second.
Motion is a second. Any public comment about the janitorial stuff for the station? All in favor?
Wait.
Oh. Yes, Skip, do you know the history of the janitorial service, or?
The toilets, they used to not have running water, so there was.
Once upon a time, no. This says janitorial service, City Hall Fire Station 51 and Police Station. So who does, I'm not, well, Bydton Park's got a bathroom, Shepherd Park has bathrooms, Fisher Park has bathrooms. Does this include, the parking garage has bathrooms, Ramp Road has bathrooms, you know, and we, us, our employees, they used to do those. So this looks kind of limited to me. Who's going to do all those extra bathrooms?
We still have two individuals within our facility maintenance and all janitorial duties. They take care of the public works complex, and they take care of the country club. The other, the parking garage and some of the other bathrooms are contracted out.
To a different contractor than these folks?
Correct. That company did not make a bid on this.
All right, did their contract expire? Are they still under contract?
We're still under contract with them.
With them, or all the places I meant?
Yeah, and when that expires, we can either come to you to renew it, or we can ask this company that we're going to be contracting.
All right. It just looked limited to me, and I knew there was a whole bunch of other bathrooms, and I wanted to make sure.
We are only cutting all bids at these developments.
Okay.
Did we get bids on this, or we just went with?
17 bids.
17 bids?
Yes.
Okay, and do we go off of quality that we know, or go price, or both?
The select committee had a form that they reviewed all of 17 bids. They had a valuation sheet and print disciplines, and they each gave me their ranking.
Okay.
I have to remember quickly, if this actually lowers total cost to the city for the same service.
Correct.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
By approximately $38,000.
That's the kind of savings we're looking for from the department. I think this is laudable.
And there's a six-month. Oh, no, I like it, yeah. There's a six-month probationary period for the new company.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 5-0. What are we at, number three?
Item three, emergency ordinance 17-3, an emergency ordinance of the City of Cocoa Beach, Florida prohibiting the immobilization booting of vehicles by the use of an impoundment device on private property within the city pending the adoption of a regulatory scheme for booting through the regular ordinance process, providing for findings of emergency, providing directions, or, I'm sorry, providing definitions, providing exceptions, providing for enforced non-codification, severability, and an effective date and an ending date.
So this, I guess we need a motion. Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion second. Go ahead, Skip.
This is, we had an emergency ordinance at our last meeting related to.
Towing.
The towing folks. So now we're finding out that booting instead of towing.
It's my understanding, nobody from towing compass came to talk about it. I assume that they had the idea of booting in their back pocket. And in fact, it's my understanding, instead of towing, they just started booting the cars.
Okay.
And then to kind of clarify, it's basically the same verbiage as the towing ordinance with the wait 15 minutes before you can boot and all that.
It is, actually, it prohibits the booting until we get an ordinance in place, a permanent ordinance. The emergency ordinance that we did last time was also companion for street ordinance, which I believe is going to be at the next meeting because of the advertising lines and stuff. But that emergency ordinance required the towing companies to comply, state what they were not doing, okay? And then the, that was the emergency ordinance. And the permanent ordinance that was read for the first reading at that same time added a lot of additional things, including having certain signage up there in addition to the signage, excuse me, in addition to the signage that they're required to have under state law, and a lot of other different things to kind of thwart the predatory aspect of it. Booting, surprisingly enough, is not regulated by the state at all, which I was shocked to see that. But there isn't any regulation of that. So we couldn't say you can't boot unless you follow state law, which we could do with the towing. So this is prohibiting booting right now. And we're coming back, and I just found out about this issue because I just drafted this a day or two ago, I guess, and I haven't had time to take a deep enough dive into what regulations should be in the, you know, full permanent ordinance yet. At the next meeting, I'll have a first reading of the full-on one.
My understanding is that, and just to make sure I understand this correctly, it really, we're focusing in on the, we're not looking to prohibit private property owners from relief. If somebody is parking inappropriately on their property, absolutely, the business owners, private property owners still have the ability to get relief from a car parked inappropriately. However, we're serving is, appears to be a predatory approach where people are looking for the opportunities to capitalize on this and almost makes a business structure that we don't want residents, we don't want visitors being subjected to a predatory approach for booting or towing. Is that?
Yes, that's accurate. And right now, they can still, oh, we didn't go hit them from towing. We just didn't follow the state law. They didn't want to follow the state law, so they started booting.
And I'm okay with booting as well, as long as they do it ethically and with predatory practices.
Right.
While we're figuring out exactly how we need to have that worded, we'll do this emergency, this emergency ordinance to get everything just right.
Great, thank you.
Any other public comment on this? All right. All in favor?
Roll call.
Oh. I got a read date on it. No, well, this.
Bring your glass.
It's roll call.
It's roll call.
First reading, but it's roll call.
It's the only reading, the emergency.
Yep, you're right.
Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hutcheson?
Aye.
Commissioner Tumulty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Mayor Capizzi?
Aye. All right. I assume some came here for public comment. Normally, I only have the one public comment in the beginning, but since the meeting was changed and we went an hour early, then some people, if anybody had a public comment, you're coming to speak now, items that were not on the agenda.
We didn't do public comment on that one before we voted.
I think we did, didn't we?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there was a public comment.
Yep, okay. Being adjourned.